Stateful meeting on Tuesday, August 22, 2023. Please join me for a light sleep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Assembly of the City of Borough of Sidka would like to respectfully acknowledge the traditional first people of Sittka. With gratitude we proceed on my behalf. Sarah, go public.
Mayor Eisenbys.
Present.
Mr. Mosher.
Ms. Duncan.
Here.
Mr. Yestad.
Here.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mr. Pike.
Here.
And Ms. Carlson is absent this evening.
Thank you. Any correspondence or agenda changes this evening? Seeing none, that will bring us to special reports. Government to government, Chairman, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and Assembly members. Wanted to share with you regarding our last two meetings this past month, on August 2nd and August 16th. Under Old Business, the Council ratified a home hall approving a resolution authorizing entry into the Alaska Tribal Welfare Compact. The tribe selected three tribal citizens served on the ad hoc committee to start making revisions to the SDA Constitution. The council also approved a contract for a pair of transit service with Catholic community service in the amount of $210,000. On August 16th, under Old Business, the tribe ratified a home hall approving a search house closure letter. Under New Business, we did some enrollment resolutions. Excuse me, resolutions. Tribe also approved the SDA ARPA proposal for heat pump and set the program. Also approved employee handbook revisions, approval of the county commission elections, approval of letter of support for Dr. Admore to go down to area and genetic research. And before we had our meeting on August 16th, the council had a work session, a consultation with the Coast Guard regarding the channel, their concept of potential infrastructure in upcoming months. So that's my report.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else here for government to government this evening?
Me.
Municipal boards, commissions.
Adios.
Municipal departments. School district. Students and guests. Seeing none, that'll bring us to persons to be heard. This is public participation for any and off of tonight's agenda not to exceed three minutes for any individual. Anybody else who'd like to come up to me this afternoon?
Good evening. My name is Richard Ween. I'd like to give a shout out to Deputy Jerry Gainesworth and happy birthday, Mr. Callahan. Tonight's issue is something that I want on the record. At the last meeting, we were shown this Visit Sittka dreamscape card, which apparently had an app which is supposed to facilitate visiting here in Sittka, and it sure does. So needless to say, I am curious yellow, as always. And so I look up Driftscape, which is the company that does this. And what they do is they deal with lots of people, but they work a lot with Chamber of Commerce's. And the one, this company is an LLC in Canada. I don't know where they have their servers, but if they have them in Canada, the information that is gleaned from your app is something that will go to a server in a foreign country. The upfront cost to this is nothing. And when you have no costs, you know that the product is you. There is an annual fee. I do not know how much that is. One of the things on the website, it says drive, it helps the cities drive foot traffic. Well, how do they do that? They boast of having analytics, precise location of the individual who has the app. There are search history identifiers, including user ID, device ID, and usage data, which is product interaction, meaning the sites and stores and so forth that you go to. They also have a thing called deep links, which direct users to your content, hiding everything else. And advanced analytics, which Driftscape will track and report information about your visitors, learn where they are visiting from, which sites they visit, which sites are most popular, and how long they will, and how long they stayed. Believe it or not, this is money that was supported by Sittka because this assembly gives money out to Visit Sittka and the Chamber to do this. So in essence, this is a representative. The city is a representative for the, this I view as an invasive application. Uber used to take your locations and it never stopped when they dropped you off. It just kept going. And that was a research article done by the Wall Street Journal a number of years ago. But I view these things as, I don't want another app which is tracking me. This is giving analytics. You are the product. And they're the unwitting tourists who are taking this where this is happening. I feel very bad that this is occurring at the behest of the City of Borough of Sittka. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for persons to be heard this evening?
Good afternoon. My name is Austin Cracker. Yesterday's paper headlines stated that the Assembly would vote on a first reading for their pay increases, according to the six.
I'm certain that's on the agenda. We'll have to come back.
Was this on or off of the agenda?
This is off of the agenda.
My apologies, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other persons to be heard this evening? Seeing none, that'll bring us to consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of item A, approve the August 8th assembly meeting minutes. Item B, approve retail marijuana store renewal application for Wee Dudes, Inc., DBA Wee Dudes at 1321 Solomon Creek Road.
Second. Has been moved in second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any public comment? Sarah, on the consent agenda?
All right, on the motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of items A and B, Mayor Eisenbys.
Yes.
Mr. Mosher.
Yes.
Mr. Pike.
Yes.
Mr. Christensen.
Yes.
Mr. Yestad.
Yes.
And Ms. Duncan.
Yes.
The motion passes 6-0 on the consent agenda.
I'm going to start with C.
I move to reappoint Darrell Windsor to a three-year term on the planning commission.
Second. So moved in second to reappoint Darrell Windsor. Is there any public comments?
My name is Richard Ween. The planning commission is one of the toughest of all the commissions that people have to deal with. It is, it needs twice a month. As we know, with 3411, HPR, there can be a great controversy about things. And it is something where the people who sign up for it need more than a thank you. I think they need a gift card. I was going to say I have my tons, but I no longer have my tons. The important thing is Darrell Windsor is a good guy. On his application, he lists that he has been doing this work for more than 12 years, which I think is extraordinary. And I just want to reach out, if you're listening, just to say thank you for your perseverance in, again, probably one of the more, or the most difficult commission or board that we have. So thank you, Darrell, and I hope you don't regret it because you're up for another three years and the future looks bright. So thank you.
Is there any other public comment on the reappointment of Darrell Windsor? Like the Assembly for deliberation? Your tour?
Yeah, I just want to say this is on the PT. Darrell's very good to work with. He's trying really hard to be even headed. And it's just been really nice working with him the last few years. So I enthusiastically will be voting yes on this.
Anything further from the assembly? Sarah.
On the motion to appoint Mr. Windsor to the planning commission, Mr. Yestad.
Yes.
Mayor Eisenbys.
Yes.
Mr. Mosher.
Yes.
Mr. Pike.
Yes.
Mr. Christensen.
Yes.
And Ms. Duncan.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 on item C.
Thank you. Bring us to unfinished business, item D, please.
I move to approve ordinance 2023-17 on second final reading amending Title IV Revenue and Finance of the City of General Code by updating Chapter 4.05 Marine Passenger Fee Fund.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve ordinance 23-17. Is there any public comment? Assembly deliberation. Sarah.
All right, on the motion to approve this ordinance on second and final reading, Mr. Christensen.
Yes.
Ms. Duncan.
Yes.
Mr. Pike.
Yes.
Mr. Yestad.
Yes.
Mr. Mosher.
Yes.
And Mayor Eisenbys.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 on second and final reading, item D.
Item E.
I move to approve ordinance 2023-18 on second and final reading, authorizing the lease of the portion of tractcy ASLS 79-4 on Harbor Mountain by Bass Road for the purpose of a telecommunications site.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve ordinance 23-18. Is there any public comment?
Good evening. My name is Richard Ween. This is on public land, so they have to get permission. There are a number of new cell sites that I see popping all over town that they don't need permission for 5G. And so I have noticed, as I move through town, 5G popping on my phone more regularly now. As far as this lease goes, you know, I followed Verizon and their very interesting path towards 5G. I followed what they're, when they were bidding for bandwidth, I know what they were focusing on. They were focusing on the gigahertz, the high range. And it's a fascinating thing. I wonder how many people know what the G in 5G stands for? Or if I say lambda equals V over F, whether they can interpret that and actually use use that formula to figure something out. I feel that it is too cheap, the lease, but that is the usual. I think it is too long, but that is the usual. I think they should have made it in increments as opposed to giving it one 30-year. The interesting thing is, is that there's a 33% of the amounts that they get for leasing other spaces. And if you look at the plaque, I think there are at least potentially four or five more spaces that they could lease. But one thing that was grossly missing is, is that net or gross? If you invest in a movie, you may never see anything because it ends up being net and there are no profits. So you don't know how much you're going to get, yet at last meeting, it was something that was lauded. And the other thing, this is a big business. They boast hundreds of thousands of cells throughout the country. So they very know, they know very well how much one of these leases costs on their, you know, the sublease there. And yet we don't know. It certainly wasn't in the memo. So you have no idea what 33% is, other than approximately 1/3. And again, I, all I can say is it's going to happen. There is no interest in exactly what the science of 5G is. And people aren't even investigating that out of curiosity. And we don't even know what wavelengths they will be utilizing in Sittka, which I think is very important. And I'm sorry, the curiosity doesn't exist there. Hopefully, you'll come to a SHARP meeting and take an amateur radio course, and you'll learn some of these things about radio waves, which I think would be wonderful. And then you'll know what a hertz is, a kilohertz, omega-hertz, and a gigahertz is. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on the ordinance? Assembly deliberation. Sarah.
All right, on the motion to approve ordinance 2023-18 on second and final reading, Ms. Duncan. Mr. Christensen.
Yes.
Mr. Pike.
Yes.
Mr. Yestad. Mayor Eisenbys.
Yes.
And Mr. Mosher.
Yes.
The motion passes 6-0 on second and final reading.
Item F, please.
I move to approve ordinance 2023-18 on second and final reading, making supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2023 and 2024, reappropriations and supplemental appropriations.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve ordinance 23-19. Is there any public comment? Assembly deliberation. Sarah.
All right, on the motion to approve this ordinance on second and final reading, Mr. Pike.
Yes.
Mr. Mosher.
Yes.
Mayor Eisenbys.
Yes.
Ms. Duncan.
Yes.
Mr. Christensen.
Yes.
And Mr. Yestad.
Yes.
The motion passes 6-0 on item F.
Brings us to new business first reading, item G.
I move to approve ordinance 2023-20 on first reading amended Title II Administration, Chapter 2.04, City and Borough Assembly of the Sittka General Code by updating Section 2.04.190 Salaries and Compensation and 2.04.195 Salaries for Assembly Members and Mayor.
Second. John, do you have an introduction on this one?
I do have a quick introduction, Mayor, and then after public comment, I'll have some more to say. Or if you wouldn't mind kicking it back over to me after that. But just to introduce it, according to Section 2.07 of the Home Rule Charter, the Assembly by ordinance shall determine the salary of the mayor and other Assembly members. And an increase in salary shall not take effect until the Assembly meeting following the regular election after an ordinance has been adopted. So with the approval and offer reservation of the Assembly, Assembly members shall also receive their actual unnecessary expenses incurred in the performance of their duties of office. So in other words, it's been 21 years since the Assembly salaries have been reviewed, as you are all aware, through collective bargaining agreements with the unions, through personnel policies, and with employees. We annually look at compensation and see if it meets market rates. The Assembly has been overlooked for 21 years in that process. So I took this forward as what I think is an appropriate time, seeing as, and since you are voting for this to be in a future Assembly, not the current sitting Assembly, you're voting for a future Assembly. Since there are three seats up for reelection this year, and Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, three more seats in the year after that. Or is it four?
I have no next year's number after.
I just saw this as an opportunity for the most turnover and the shortest amount of time. So you truly are voting on your future Assembly with this. So with that, Mayor, if you want to kick it over to public comment.
Great. Thank you for the introduction. Is there any public comment on ordinance 23-20?
Good evening. My name is Richard Ween. And I love irony. I have said that multiple, multiple times. It's the Assembly that sets the salary for the administrator. And here we have the administrator proposing a salary for the Assembly. So I don't know. You can argue with me, but the Latin phrase quid pro quo gets in there, meaning that the optics are very unusual here and that it should have come another way. Just for the notion, it is though the Assembly has been overlooked. I don't think it's an issue about whether they've been overlooked. The question is, the Section 2.07 says about setting a salary. It doesn't even say whether there should be a salary, about setting zero salary. I believe that the Sittka Assembly should be not paid. It would be the ideal, or not to change the amount of money they receive. God bless you. You all are gainfully employed. And hopefully, you are doing this out of a sense of duty for the city that we all love. The bottom line is, this is not ultimately a lot of money. And therefore, this is what determines whether an individual will be on the Assembly or not. That is, that is a wow. There has been an intimation that the school board people are not coming out in droves to sit on the school board because they're not getting paid. Yes, they're both a lot of work, but it is a labor of love. You know, I hope they don't ask your kids for a salary for doing parental duty. And if they're, you're only talking about nonrepresented CBS employees, what were the represented CBS employees? How much did they get since 2002? That would be a fun number. Here, we have 56% for nonrepresented. What I would say, the Assembly should start a union. And perhaps they would do a lot better. But I have an idea, and that idea is for nonprofits, you give away $45,000. That's other people's money. Now you have an opportunity to give your own money away. My suggestion is you start the Assembly fund and you put all of your salaries into it, and it'll be about $46,000, and then you earmark it to a charity. And let me be so bold as to suggest the charity for this year. And that is childcare, 46 grand for childcare. All I can say is, this is ridiculous. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on the ordinance?
Good afternoon. My name is Austin Cracker. I would like to thank Dr. Ween for taking some of my wind out of my sails, mentioning quid pro quo. But as mentioned, the Assembly is receiving an increase of about $18,000 yearly. And while Section 207 of the Sittka Home Rule Charter does allow the Assembly to set its wages, I think this ordinance is in violation of Section 1701 under subsection A, and I quote, "No elected official may vote on any question on which he or she has a substantial financial interest," unquote. Now, while only two of the Assembly are currently up for, well, no, three are currently up for reelection, my apologies, there are still four others, three others, that would receive this increase next year. As the current Assembly members, you have a financial interest in this ordinance as it increases your pay and therefore is of substantial economic interest, which is not defined in the Sittka Home Rule Charter. Meanwhile, as mentioned by Dr. Ween, the ordinance was created at the behest of the city administrator whose wages are set by the Assembly. As such, I request the present body move the vote to the October election ballot for community consideration. If Section 207 of the Sittka Charter prevents placing this ordinance on the ballot, I ask that the Assembly vote no on this ordinance and adopt changes to the Sittka Charter, allowing future pay increases to be accepted or rejected by popular vote within the community. Granting this authority to the voters ensures that the Assembly listens to the needs of the people it represents while preventing conflicts of interest and other scandalous activity. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on the ordinance? I see the Assembly for deliberation.
Yeah, so I actually have plans to put Assembly vote like this myself. I was on the Assembly 20 years ago when we did the last one. And we put it to a vote, and it was silly. And I had so many people coming up to me going, why are you wasting everybody's time for such a trivial amount of money? The fact of the matter is, it costs money to be on the Assembly. I didn't lose hours of work. I can't go home before meetings. And it's not just this meeting, it's all the other committees. And so I have to buy dinner in town. And the amount of time I spend, I know, I'm not telling you that you don't know. I get phone calls and meetings and things. It's a trivial amount. The one point I would like to bring up, though, is that one of the things about a democracy is that in theory, anybody can run for office. Well, the reality is that a lot of people can't because they can't afford it. And that's definitely true of legislators more full-time. And I don't think anybody is going to run for Assembly because of the sticker or whatever, the $200 a month. However, if it pushes them over the line, I see that as a good thing. Because, you know, somebody says, well, it's a lot of time, but okay, I get $500 bucks a month. But it needs to be enough to where it's not a joke. And when I first was on the Assembly, it was $100, and it wasn't a joke. You know, it, and we're right back at that 20 years later. And so I don't think that this is honestly that big of a deal. But I do think it's important that, you know, like I say, people who run for the Assembly, and this is, I mean, most of us, at most, are going to get a couple of years of this, get some compensation for the amount of time. And honestly, money, we have to put out. And it's a, and like I said, we only have four people running this year for three spots, which is kind of sad. And like I said, if there was one more person who was wanting to do it because they got a little bit more money just to get that last strong Campbell's back to go to do it, great. So I don't have any problem with this. And I think it would be silly to send it to the voters.
Yes, John, sorry if you asked.
Hold on a second. Oh, that's good. I just wanted to add another opportunity to speak. So I, a lot of predictable comments, and I knew that the issue of the voters would come up. And I'd just like to state that the Home Rule Charter was put in place by the voters. And when the voters put that in place, they put this section in here. And we're following the section that is in Home Rule Charter. If there were a desire to change the Home Rule Charter, that also takes a vote of the people. Again, this is for a future Assembly. Also of note is that sponsorship of an ordinance, an item to come before the table, can either be done by the administrator or it can be done by two Assembly sponsors. I brought this forward, as I said in the introduction, because of the compensation studies for all the positions citywide that we've taken on. And as we've seen, since November 4th, 2002 was the last time that the Assembly compensation was reviewed. And I will say, the reason I brought this forward is that over the past few years, I've spent a lot of individual working time with all of the Assembly members. I mean, we've got numerous ordinances that come forward, and my office has had to call any one of you to say, can you give up an hour, two hours of your day to come in and sit down at a table with me, help craft an ordinance, help put a resolution together, help with some administrative policy, something that requires your time and effort outside of just the few hours you sit here? I know there's a lot of research that goes into the decisions the Assembly has to make, and that's not, that time just doesn't happen on its own. I know, as I said, many of you have to leave work. Sometimes you're giving up events with your kids. And sometimes this position requires travel. So I was trying to find a level. So I was trying to find a level that is equivalent to other southeast communities and how they're compensating their Assembly members and council members. And I think that looking at the numbers here, this actually stays under the rate of inflation that has happened over the past 21 years. And when I, you know, when I picked that number, I was actually pretty amazed when my first thought was, you know, these should be the amounts, but let me look at the math on this. And when the math came out to just literally $5 to $10 of what I chose, it showed that the, that at least the estimate was close. And it's matching up with other communities in our area and what they're doing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Governor. Mr. Mayor, I will be brief. I just wanted to kind of concur with a lot of the tourists that there is a cost to this. I mean, I do do this, and I think everyone does, it's a labor of love. I feel like it's my job to give back to this community. I was telling a friend recently that, you know, I'm not from here. I just came here since I was, been here since I was 19 years old and been able to raise a family in a very beautiful, safe place, good community. And so this is my time now to give back. And I do it with pleasure, and it's very fulfilling. But there's emotional costs, there's financial costs. You know, every time you sit down and get a cup of coffee or whatever, or take time off, I quit frequently, maybe take along the lunch, I'm using my personal leave that I could be using to go on vacation or do something or go somewhere else. I'm getting that up. And I don't have a problem with that. But I think this is completely fair. And for those who might complain or, I would say that we've actually, the city's been saving money for 20 years by not having any increases. And I would just say there's not going to be another increase by some time. So I'm okay with this. Thank you.
Crystal.
So I will start by saying I'm not going to benefit from this. It'll happen after new people are spawned in. And so I do want to speak in full support of it, though. And I'm going to do so for a reason. We're talking about costs to us, which are really real. We do have costs associated with serving on this board, but I'm actually going to focus on the costs to the community, which brings about a lack of representation up here. Because we know that we have to show up on Tuesdays, Thursdays, sometimes Mondays, occasionally Saturdays, which means for a good segment of SICA who have to work as second job to make ends meet, they cannot just scratch out and show up to meetings on occasion. So what that then entails is a lack of representation. If they want to serve, they can't. They're prohibited because there are financial aspects that they have to take care of their families, et cetera. So I think this isn't going to supplement or become a second job to someone. But you're right, Tor, 250 is basically what we get at this point in time, or I think that I almost said 300. I hope that by bumping it up, that's enough of a cushion so that somebody who needs to bring in additional income by working two jobs can even consider this. Because we know at this point in time, they can't because of the time commitment that is allocated to serving in this three-year position. And so I support this bump for those reasons. And I really do hope that it does, if it passes, meet the goal, which is to see more people eligible or considering running for the Assembly. Because it was stated that we have a full-time job that we depend on, and we're pretty good. I will say, I do come from privilege in that I'm not using Assembly monies to buy groceries or make ends meet. And I have to recognize that privilege and say, that in itself kind of lends to who can take these seats. So I want to see a greater pool of people who are eligible or stepping up to run. And I think this is one measure that can do that. So I do support this, and I will be voting yes today.
Thank you for that, Crystal. That was about exactly what I was going to say as well. It's very hard to have this discussion without a city self-serving. And I think the Assembly has heard from numerous persons that there may be a financial barrier to participating on the Assembly. So that was going to be the path that I went down on this as well. So thank you for stating that. Tim?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with virtually everything I've heard tonight about the barriers to being able to do this. I think certainly didn't take this lightly when I chose to do it. And it certainly wasn't a financial reason to do it. But I am a big advocate of recognizing people's efforts. And people put a lot of effort and time into these sorts of things. And while this is not going to compensate people for that at a level measured worth their time and their work, it is an indication, both, it is an indication from the community that they value what we do too. So, and you know, my terms up too, so. And I think it's kind of one of those things where until you've been here for a little while, you don't really realize the amount of work that goes in behind the scenes, you know, in terms of research that John referenced and the conversations we have with John and the things that we need to read and do. I mean, I think we average 100 pages a time, pretty much. So this isn't going to match what we, the effort we put into it, or people put into this job, but I think it recognizes people's effort a little bit. And I think it should keep up with the time. So it's all in favor of this one.
Chris?
This topic has been a tough one for me. It's kind of funny, just this spring, I was vehemently opposed to similar raises and a different board that I served on. But for different reasons. One, we serve four days out of the year, so it just didn't seem right. Obviously, sometimes we're putting in four days a week on average doing this. So we definitely put in a lot more time here. I give up a lot being here. You know, I give up a lot of evenings with my kids, with my family. Business-wise, I give up a ton. I made certain choices this summer to be here. And that cost me a lot of fuel and different fishing opportunity. And, you know, and I'm fine with that. I knew when I ran and was elected that that was something I was okay with. And financially compensated or not, I could live with it because serving on here was worth it. But it would be nice to be somewhat compensated, something that maybe I can take a little more disposable income. I could take my kids to the movie or, I don't know, just. I'm not here for the money, but it definitely doesn't hurt having a little extra to.
Now, the thing that I have here is, when you read his result, that there is a, really, an ultimate safety issue. And to believe that there would be competition for funding for a basic issue for an airport, to me is a bit baffling. And I don't know why SICA support would be so critical, but thank you for putting that forward. But what is distressing is that this is clearly a safety issue. And I wonder if I should call the state and say, "What the heck is going on here? This needs to be done." I mean, why are they even going through this process? So that being said, I also noticed that there was no memo for this. And so it's always nice as a person's from the Assembly, excuse me, a person's, as a citizen, to read the memos to get the idea of what people are thinking. So, thank you. This is a good resolution, but again, it's a head scratch. And I think I might call the state on it and see what, what actually they're thinking if Mr. Kara really needed the support for a life and safety issue. So, well, there's a hole in the life raft, and, you know, they may not fix it. So, thank you.
Is there any other public comment on the resolution? And suddenly deliberation? Sarah?
On the motion to approve Resolution 2023-24 on first and final reading, Mr. Pike?
Yes.
Ms. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Biestad?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Eisenbauer?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 on item H.
Thank you. That'll bring us two persons to be heard. This is public participation creative on or off tonight's agenda, not to exceed three minutes per individual.
Well, welcome back. I'm in search of Ween. And within the memo, it says something that's very interesting, the memo for the salaries, that is. It says, "Assembly members shall also receive their actual and necessary expenses incurred in the performance of their duties of office," and that's in quotes. So, Mr. Christensen, you can charge your dinner. You can charge your tolling. This doesn't make any sense. And the good news is, if the city pays for it, then I can do a FOIA on it and see exactly how much time you are actually spending on these things. So it says here, "Assembly members shall also receive their actual and necessary expenses incurred." So that is one thing that is there. The other thing is, Mr. Pike said, "An indication that the community values what you do, but you're voting for it." Now, if the community came here and brought you a gift, that is something, or patted you on the back. But you're voting yourself for a raise, even though it's not a heck of a lot. I think it's kind of interesting that that is something that you see. Also, with all the time that everybody spends, giving this money is not going to change all the time. If somebody can't make the time for this, $200 is not going to change their schedule. So the question is, why don't you give a real wage? If you're giving up an hour from your work, how about giving a real wage hourly for them and pay you? But you're not going to do that because it doesn't make sense for a city Assembly with this. So it becomes, again, labor of love. And I don't understand a lot of your arguments for this. I like the idea of having the Assembly Fund and then giving your own money to the individuals who might need that. And that would be an extra boost for the city. Remember, you only give $45,000 for nonprofits, but whatever. And, well, that's about that for that. But the important thing here is, and I'm just going to slip over while I have a few seconds here, and that is, there has been a big issue. Woody came up and said, "Well, there's a resolution from the tribe about home health." That they have a letter. And I think that as a community service, a representative from SIR, he's come down to the Assembly, had a 15-minute discussion as to why this service has been eliminated or modified from the city. And even though it may not, at the end of the day, have changed, but there's a lot of confusion that's going on in the city. SIR is the only offering, the only place that people have to go. It is tax-funded. And I do believe that they owe a duty to explain these things and also have it open to members of the public to Q and A them. I think that would be fair. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for persons to be heard this evening? I've seen none. That'll bring us on to reports. Since you've last seen me, myself and John had an opportunity to travel to Homer for Alaska Municipal League Summer Session. Once again, the good and bad thing that came from it is that every community in Alaska is having the same issues we are. So that's bad that everyone is experiencing the same thing, but it's good knowing that we're not unique. So it's not just a localized SICA problem. It wasn't directly stated, but also in the tone of the conversations, you hear that municipalities were getting stressed out. A lot of their resources were being pushed to the max with free federal money that's coming our way. And I think that's a trend that's going to continue. Other communities are having a hard time finding labor. They're having a hard time finding the raw materials. I think that's only going to worsen as time goes forward. One big thing that I did get out of some of our discussions there, Cody Eck had recently put in a haul-out and had, they tried to have their harbor department run it. They said it was an utter disaster and failure. They strongly recommended that we look to an outside source that is experienced in running haul-outs as opposed to having it done in-house. If it is done in-house, you essentially need to spin up an entire new department simply for running the haul-out and not hope that your harbors is going to be able to run down there and pull boats as necessary. I was able to sit in on the United States Coast Guard Tribal Consultation. Chairman invited me to that. It was very eye-opening to hear what the Coast Guard wanted to talk to Tribal Council about and what their questions were for the project. Overall, it sounds as if Tribal Council supports the fast cutter dock here. And in fact, they looked for a way so that their general manager could consult directly with someone higher than the Coast Guard in order to speed the process along. Because we're all aware of the September dead, next September's deadline for using that money. Myself and Chairman did restart our quarterly meetings. We lapsed those for a little bit. Chairman's saying, you know, "Don't meet if you don't need to meet." So we kind of gave those a little break, but we're back into them now. I think it was good for us to sit down on a Chairman-to-Mayor level and kind of talk. It also appears from the Tribal Council meeting that they are not, as Tribal Council and as Tribal citizens, not in support of home health care disappearing or whatever shape that it is now taking. And that was the memo, the phone call that Chairman talked about. And so I'm not sure what'll come out next in that, but it's my understanding that they are not pleased. John?
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to add on to your report about the Alaska Municipal League Summer Conference. And yes, we did travel to Homer. In that conference, the first day split up the Conference of Mayors and then the Managers in the Alaska Municipal Management Association being on day one. And on that first day, our agenda was essentially all of us talking about the problems happening in our community and then offering some recommendations on ways we did, or ideas, things we tried to solve them, and really just kind of brainstorm together. And as the Mayor stated, we're not unique in a lot of our problems. But one that really filtered to the top was recruiting and retention efforts. There are just some hard-to-fill positions, especially in policing. We're looking at some ideas right now, and I won't name the communities, but I will talk about the state. The state offered some incentives to get troopers. I don't know the exact number, but I do know that there's still over 100 troopers down in vacant positions across the state. There's one community nearby that's now offering a $40,000 sign-on bonus, which is pretty substantial for hard-to-fill positions at police officers. And then there was another community, the Uspianian, and offered a $60,000 sign-on bonus. And speaking with those communities, so far, it's not really created much of a blip in the applications coming in, the hiring. So law enforcement is not a popular field right now. And I think we need to get creative in ways to get some of these positions filled and some of the other hard-to-fill positions too. So we're working on that. Broadband also, I shouldn't say broadband came up. I brought broadband up before I got there. And as you've seen, when we get large numbers of visitors, our internet service slows to a crawl, cell service sometimes is not working. That affects businesses, that affects just overall quality of life. So after that's happened a few times this summer, I finally made contact with someone at GCI. We were able to have a discussion. And because of that, he actually came down to AML, and I got to meet with him face-to-face, and we talked about this issue. And he will also be here in September during Southeast Conference and maybe bringing one of their senior VPs with him as well to talk about this. So they are aware of the issues with broadband in our community and areas. So, they are aware of the issues with broadband in our community and areas that have been hit by large numbers of visitors, and they're willing to address this and work with us. So, more to come on broadband. Thanks.
Brian, do you have a report this evening?
Just quickly, I've been here in Seattle the last couple of days. I'm scheduled to return tomorrow, should be in the office tomorrow afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Liaison representatives? Sarah?
All righty, well, I have my list of vacancies on our boards and commissions. There are several, Animal Hearing Board, Health Needs, Historic Preservation, Investment Committee, Local Emergency Planning Commission, Parks and Rec, Planning Commission, Police and Fire Commission, and Tree and Landscape Committee. So, if folks are interested in serving, they can contact our office in the back of the room on our website. Soon, it will be published in the paper. We have our sample ballot for the October 3rd municipal election. On the back of the sample ballot, in the back of the room, I have the different voting options that are available to qualified voters. There is voting by mail, there's early person, early voting in person here at Harrigan Hall that starts September 18th, it'll be weekdays at 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. through October 2nd. There's voting by fax, by email, personal rep, and then, of course, here at Harrigan Hall, both of our precincts are located here, they can vote on Election Day from 7 a.m. to 8 p.m., so, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other reports this evening? Would you have executive session this night, tonight, if we have a motion, please?
I'm here to go into executive session to discuss a legal matter, a Gary Paxton industrial property transaction, the immediate knowledge of which would adversely affect the finances of the municipality, and which involve legal matters affecting the municipality or legal consequences of past, present, or future municipal actions, and invite in Finance Director Melissa Haley and Chief Department Director Gary White.
Second. Is moving second, is there any public comment on entering executive session?
Good afternoon, my name is Richard Green. I understand what the purpose of executive session is. However, this is a property transaction, property transactions are recorded by the city, are recorded by the state, and therefore they are public information. The basic notion that I have is that you need more than those few words that you put on, I think, to qualify as executive session. There is no sense to this as it is stated, so I object and hope you do not go into executive session, at least until a little more explanation as to why a property transaction, maybe that's not the words for what you're gonna be talking about. If it's not, then please explain it. But, what can I say? But thank you.
Is there any other public comment on entering executive session? Sarah?
All right, motion to go into executive session, Mr. Yestad?
Yes.
Mayor Eisenbys?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Pike?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
And Ms. Duncan?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0, we'll be meeting in room 7.
Thank you. Assembly, please take a break on your way in, we haven't had a break in an hour.